Welcome to Soundside and welcome to KUOW's District Dash. I'm Libby Dankman here with KUW politics reporter David Hyde. Seven Seattle City Council races will be decided this November, and we've invited all the council candidates to answer the questions voters most want addressed. But we know that you're all busy, so we're getting you those answers in 30 minutes. It's a dash and it's gonna move fast. If a candidate goes overtime with an answer, you will hear this. Yeah, that's a seagull. He likes us to stay on the clock, so let's try to do that. Today, we're headed to District One, which stretches from Arbor Heights to Pioneer Square, including West Seattle, South Park, Georgetown, and Soto. Welcome to the candidates vying to represent District One, Amazon whistleblower and climate activist Marin Costa. Hello.
Hello. Thanks for inviting me to be here today.
And former Meta attorney and Air Force veteran Rob Saka. Welcome to you.
Thank you, Libby. David, excited to be here.
So let's get going with our first questions. David?
All right, Rob, let's start with you. As you know, there's a new drug law in Seattle, which allows the city attorney to prosecute for public use or possession. It emphasized getting people into drug treatment, but there's no new money for drug treatment. Why do you support that law even though there's no new money for drug treatment?
Yeah, I absolutely support this law in huge, actually, area of contrast, unlike my opponent, who does not support or believe that there's any role whatsoever for prosecutors or police in the open, public drug use debate. Listen, we need to do better for people suffering from debilitating drug dependency challenges and the status quo.
... approach will return our back on people in crisis and need. It hasn't worked. Fentanyl overdoses, drug overdoses are killing people. More people, almost as many more people, as a report I saw last week, almost as many people have died of drug overdoses this year in Seattle alone compared to last year. And so I support that bill. Not only that, I led and organized a signature and gathering effort on the campaign trail, collected hundreds of signatures and petitions. Then I took the extra step of going down to Seattle City Hall and testifying in favor of it. As a dad of three young kids, we need to do better for people, and I shouldn't have to be doing gymnastics over people and paraphernalia when I go visit small businesses.
Great. Marin, Rob said, and I don't know if this is true, that you wouldn't have supported this law, but what I want to zero in on is part of the law is about, in theory, getting people into drug treatment. The other part, according to Mayor Harrell, is to try to protect the public from public drug use in incompatible spaces, let's say, next to a public school, or he mentioned transit stops. What do you think about that part of the law? Is it appropriate for officers to sometimes make arrests if somebody's using drugs in locations like that?
Thanks, David, and it's Marin.
Oh, sorry, Marin.
That's all right. I get a chance on radio to tell as many people as possible, because you're not the only one. We need to, you know, my stance is, I didn't actually say I agreed with this law or not. I actually think it's unfortunately fairly performative. If you're someone who really thinks incarceration for substance use disorder works, which there's a dearth of evidence to prove that, and I will be an evidence-based leader, so that is a difference between my opponent and me, but if you're someone who believes that incarceration works, that's not gonna happen, because the jails are, you know, understaffed, the courts are backed up. If you're someone that thinks that diversion and treatment for substance use disorder works, that's also not gonna happen, because, as you said, we haven't invested. And so we need to, first of all, make sure that we have the investments that are gonna be necessary to help us actually address this problem with evidence. So evidence says treatment works, diversion works. I would say we start by making sure that we are not tolerating harm, and that is for all of us. So if there is, you know, a problem at a school, near a school, or...
That's a seagull. That's time.
All right, let me, just one follow-up then. So had you been on council, would you have voted for it or not? And if you could address that piece of the law that Harrell did in his executive order saying officers should consider arresting folks in certain kinds of locations, public schools, crowded bus stops?
So I think it's hard to know if I would. I don't think I am deep enough in all of the amendments that were added to know for sure if I would have voted for it. I know Lisa Herbold got some important clauses in, but it is problematic for me that we are not seeing the investments that we're going to need to see in order to actually get the results that we want from this. So I'm fine with being in line with the state law. If evidence showed that locking people up worked, like, let's lock them up, but it doesn't, you know?
So that's a, that's a, it's yes, no, maybe?
I would, that's probably a maybe. I would, if I was on council, I would be as deep enough to, because it's such a, this one is such a particular case. There's good and bad. You know, maybe I would say, yes, let's just move forward, let's get it on the books, and let's, but let's, but we have to have, that we have to back up the treatment, and I'm not seeing that.
30 seconds.
I heard a lot of equivocation on a really important issue. This is not a moment to get up to speed. I think it's, people are demanding action, and I'm here to pass something and make it better if it's not working. But too many people are dying on these streets of overdoses. My opponent is maybe for, maybe against it, who knows? It's unclear. But in the meantime, while she thinks about what her appropriate position are, dozens and potentially hundreds of people are gonna continue to die. And so I support adopting state law.
So we're gonna move on, because homelessness is the number-one issue that voters, listeners, time after time, we hear in surveys, they want to hear about. Marin Costa, do you support Seattle's current approach to clearing homeless encampments? Yes or no? And please explain why.
I don't, because we are not doing a good enough job hooking up people with services. So moving people from one site to another is expensive, inhumane, and ineffective. So we need to be, this is just like, you want action? I want action. I am so tired of our city sitting around not doing what we know we need to do, that the evidence shows works. Like, let's get the job done, and it's really frustrating, and I think we're all frustrated. We have all of the tools, we have all of the evidence, we know what works, and we continue these failed policies. Sweeps and moving encampments, to me, is a failed policy. There is no excuse that our city should still be having to do that, because we should have done what we knew worked a long time ago and set up the programs that can get people inside and connect people with services. So, yeah, I'm frustrated.
Rob Saka, same question. Do you support Seattle's current approach to clearing homeless encampments? Yes or no? And please explain why.
Yes, absolutely. I, I'm here to address the root causes of homelessness, things like, you know, anti-poverty measures and providing better access to affordable housing to catch people upstream and prevent homelessness. But we also need to have better systems, services, programs, and interventions for once people do start experiencing homelessness today. And part of that is doing a better job of connecting people with the shelter and services they so desperately need. So shelter, for me, looks like tiny homes, hotel spaces, RV, tent, safe locks. We need some probably congregated housing options as well. It's not just one thing.
There's a theme. But unlike my opponent, who does not support any encampment cleanups or removals in any circumstances, I do. We're not doing, again, we're not doing anyone any favors, and we continue to turn our back on people suffering in need and living in unsafe, unsanitary, deplorable conditions. We can and must do better for our unhoused and unsheltered neighbors. And so, yes, I support encampment cleanups.
Rob Saka, follow-up for you, 30 seconds on this one. In July, a King County judge said that the city of Seattle was using an overly broad definition of obstruction to clear some encampments without warning, so without that 72-hour period and an outreach. Is the city clearing too many encampments right now without making sure it has treatment and shelter options in place?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with that specific King County Superior Court ruling or decision. Would have to look more into that. But I will tell you this, I've been talking to impacted communities, including homelessness advocates, and talking to folks at Real Change, going down to meet people where they're at, understand the need, understand the impacts of some of these encampment cleanups, understanding the impact of policing and arguably overpolicing in certain instances. So I'm talking and listening to impacted communities. It's unclear if, like, again, I would have to look into that specific issue further, but we do need to follow the law.
Sorry, you are seagulled on that one, just a little overtime.
Hey, I like the sound of seagulls, though. That's calming and soothing.
Feels like we're on the coast, right? It feels like we're at the sound. Marin Costa, follow-up for you. Are there places where homeless encampments should be removed even when the city has not offered services, so that similar obstruction type of removal without the 72 hours, for example, right next to a children's playground or another sensitive site?
So we hear a lot of equivocation over here with my opponent. I would say no, and I have met with homeless providers and people who have lived experience. And it's kind of shocking, almost, Rob, with your, you know, personal story, that you would support moving people, throwing away their things. You know, if you ask the people who are actually being swept, they're not gonna say, yeah, thanks, this was really what we needed. This is helpful. We need to be, we need to be being helpful, and we cannot...
We gotta move on. I'll give you 15 seconds each to respond. Rob, 15 seconds.
I think my opponent just alluded to the fact that, look, I'm someone, I'm a former foster kid. I overcame the foster care system, and through the help of community and effective government services, I am where I am today, sitting on this stage, talking to you all, and I'm grateful for that. But, so as a former foster kid, I know what it's like to feel uprooted and swept away, which also gives me a unique experience to know we need to do better for our unhoused and unsheltered neighbors. I'm tired of well-intended people without these experiences.
All right, 15 seconds for you, Marin. Thank you. 15 seconds.
Like I said, we need to lead with compassion and refuse to tolerate harmful behavior. Where there is harmful behavior, whether it's next to a school or anywhere else, we will not accept harmful behavior. But we also can't be sweeping people. We need to be connecting them with resources, and we can do that. It's not that hard.
We tried the anti-sweeps policy in 2020 and...
We gotta move on if we, yeah, we gotta move on.
To affordable housing, another top issue for West Seattle voters. Question for Rob. Would you want to see more density, more multifamily zoning in every neighborhood in West Seattle?
I would like to see, yes, I would like to see more growth, more building, more density, more development. And, you know, I view growth and development as, and I think my opponent agree on a lot of this at a very high level. And, for example, I support Comp Plan Number Five, which is a combined approach, and we need to make up, we need to make up for some bad policy and planning and growth decisions from, you know, 10 years ago. And so that means every neighborhood, I view it as a shared responsibility and opportunity. I think a good starting point for some of these, the building and growth and density is along existing transit lines and community hubs, business corridors, and things like that. But we can't start and end there as well, because who lives historically in these communities? Well, I'll tell you, I grew up in one, and I live in one in Delridge myself. It's primarily black and brown and socioeconomic disadvantaged communities, and so the opportunity for growth is something that we should share equally, and I'm glad the state legislature acted recently to eliminate or to allow more options.
Marin, same question for you. More multifamily housing in every neighborhood in West Seattle? Yes or no?
Absolutely. We are probably 20 years behind in housing supply, and we have not ever enabled us, as a city, to be able to grow housing the way that we grow jobs and population. We've always capped housing while jobs and population are allowed to grow. So there's an Alternative Plan Six, you know, while Five is a good start, but it's absolute baseline, it won't actually help us get to that place where we're actually on top of our housing needs. We're always playing catch-up. I would love to see Alternative Six explored. It's been put out there as an option. As a city, we have a choice to at least consider one comp plan that will actually get us to the housing capacity that we need and erase the historical racism that we've had in all of our previous comp plans.
Okay, so that's two yimbys, it sounds like, in West Seattle, meaning yes in my backyard. What about fimbys? Do you also, Marin, support more permanent supportive housing in every neighborhood in West Seattle?
Yes, I would, I would love to see every district pony up several locations where all of this housing can be. We know we need the housing. It should, there should be no excluded areas. There's actually a church in Admiral right now that has sold their space to a permanent supportive housing group where they can bring permanent supportive housing right into Admiral, and I'm all in favor of that.
Same question, Rob. Permanent supportive housing to help folks who are homeless in every neighborhood in West Seattle?
Every neighborhood is on the hook for, you know, sharing in the opportunity we have to do better for our unhoused and unsheltered neighbors. And, look, I live in Delridge. I'm an attorney, I choose to live in Delridge, I love it, it's a beautiful community, come on down. But where I live in Delridge is fairly close to a halfway house. And, you know, look, we need to, we need to be welcoming that example of, in Admiral, where it's a great example of a public-private partnership with the church and expanding. And I've talked to a lot of people just throughout this campaign and door-knocking, who are, including those that serve on the board, and help launch that initiative, and we need more like it. But we also need to be thoughtful and make sure that we preserve the character of, as much as possible, of every individual neighborhood. Both of those things can coexist at the same time.
So we're midway through the District Dash here for District One, so we're just gonna take a breather, have a little palate cleanser question for our candidates here. My question to you, and we'll start with Marin Costa. Where in your district, when you have a free afternoon open up, would you most like to while away a couple hours?
Alki Beach. I pretty much live on Alki Beach as much as I can, and it's one of my favorite places in the world.
Walk at the beach. Rob Saka, what's your answer?
Either the Delridge Playfields, which they just finally redid, great, and Hiawatha just resurfaced there. We're gonna, when I win, we're gonna open up that park finally and put some rigor around our parks and making sure, community, we reclaim our gathering spaces. But, but yeah, one of our beautiful parks, maybe Walthell Park on Alki, I love that, too. My kids love that park.
All right, we have some agreement on Alki, and, yeah, some differentiation as well. Let's talk about public safety. You know, Marin Costa, KUOW has gotten a lot of questions from listeners about this issue. Why are you, as opposed to your opponent, the best person to help lead the city council to address the recent spike in violent crime in Seattle?
I am the public safety candidate in this race. I have the endorsement from the 911 Dispatch Guild, I have a four out of five from the Alliance for Gun Responsibility, and I have a plan. I have a plan and a plan and a proposal to pay for it. We need more and better cops. We have a recruitment problem and, you know, a bad apple problem. We need to fix accountability, but we need to also rebuild the force. We need to keep our bar high so that we don't get into a situation like Memphis when they lowered their bar, brought in the five officers that ended up partaking in the Tyree Nichols murder. We need to stand up this alternative response. We have so many successful programs already in place, Lead, Co-Lead, the, we are in the Third Avenue Project. So we need to invest in those programs to make sure that we are putting the muscle behind them that they will need to succeed. And then we will all feel like, instead of being frustrated that we feel like nothing changes, we will actually start to see change.
Rob Saka, why are you the best person to help lead the city in this recent spike of violent crime?
Personal experiences, professional experiences, and civic experiences. And, yeah, so I'm the strongest in public safety, and I'm proud of that. Number one is, look, I am the only one in this race who has actual experience writing government policy and helping to pass law, and I've done that by serving on countless government boards and commissions, including to select the new Seattle Police Chief, including to champion and pass a brand-new justice reform framework right here in Martin Luther King County that voters approved a few years ago, by the way. Also, consistency on public safety. Unlike my opponent, who said during a recent candidate forum, the MLK Labor Candidate Forum, when asked, was the 2020 vote to defund the police a good idea or a bad idea? I said it was a horrible idea. She said it was a good idea. And now she's seemingly against it. So she was for it before, she's against it. I've been entirely consistent the whole time on public safety. And then change. It's not change if we don't, we fail to prosecute people or have an option to prosecute people as a means to encourage them to treatment on, for drug use in the streets.
Marin, I saw you shaking your head there. Let's clear the air, 30 seconds on the defund conversation.
Look, it's almost laughable at this point. My opponent is gonna continue to try to mislead everybody on the defund issue. The question was, at the time, was it right for city council to vote to defund? Now, at the time, 50%, 53% of Seattle was asking for that, the nation was demanding it, and that's what I would expect our city council members to do, is take a bold stand when the majority of their constituents are demanding it. Now, in retrospect, did it work? No. Did we have a plan in place? No. We can do better, and we're starting to see some of that coming online already.
Rob, 30 seconds.
It didn't say "at the time," but, you know, we can quibble over that, but more substantively, more substantively, she said it was a good idea, based off of public opinion poll. Look, I checked the public opinion poll. I checked the Crosscut Elway Poll from October 2020, weeks after that defund vote, and it showed that only 20% of voters in Seattle actually supported defund. It's ineffective. We chased out the first black female police chief we've ever had in the city. On our heels, we've seen record numbers of officers resign and leave the force. Why? They didn't feel supported. We can and must do better.
We don't want to get you seagull'd. We're gonna move on.
Thank you.
Rob, let's stick with you. Last weekend, activists gathered outside Mayor Harrell's home protesting the new budget, the new proposed supplemental budget, I should say. In it, there's an increase of around $17 million over the 2023 budget for policing. The protesters were pointing to recent incidents, you know, like the one where the union leader was caught on tape joking about the death of a woman who had been hit by a Seattle police car. Those protesters are saying SPD's budget should be cut. What do you say?
No. I'm here to create an environment where every voice is heard, decisions are fully transparent, and compassion defines our approach to whatever the issue is. But defunding doesn't work. We're grossly understaffed, our officers and our forces grossly understaffed and under-resourced. I'm here to hire more police, empower them to effectively carry out their public safety mandate, set and enforce the highest standards of excellence and professionalism in the communities where they operate, and swiftly hold them accountable, just like you would anyone if you don't do your job right. As a black man growing up in this country, I've experienced police brutality firsthand, which is how I know we need better police. Not no police, better police. And I was also a block away from the finish line of the 2013 Boston Marathon bombing, when those bombs went off. And I'll never forget, and the chaos and the confusion and the terror that unfolded. Make no mistake, that was a terrorist attack on this country. I'll never forget seeing hundreds of emergency responders, including police, putting their safety on the line to protect us. So we need good response times and better officers. Both those things can coexist. And yes, we need civilian-led responses, too.
Uh-oh, it's the dreaded seagull. Marin, same question to you. Do you agree with protesters that SPD's budget should be cut?
We need to start taking public safety seriously and cut the BS. Honestly, there's a lot of people who are trying to build their career off it, trying to grandstand about it, and our public is suffering. We have plenty of data to show that we need to build up this alternative response so that we can take a chunk of work off of our officer's plate. When we do that, the Dispatchers Guild has estimated they can move as much as 50% of the calls off of the officer's plate onto the care team. We just doubled our police force overnight. We are struggling to hire police right now. We have $30,000 bonuses out. It's really a morale issue. No one is hiring police. The armed services are having trouble hiring police, but we need armed officers. We are not Japan or Norway, when you can walk around with a bully stick and do your job. We have an intensely armed country, and we need our police officers to be, you know, armed as well.
We're gonna move on to the issue of rent control. Rent control isn't legal under Washington state law for cities to enact, but some state lawmakers are talking about changing that. Would you, Marin Costa, support some form of rent control if the state allowed Seattle to do it? Why or why not? You have one minute.
I think we need to do what we can to protect renters from rent gouging, you know, and really big increases in a short amount of time with no warning. So rent stabilization is something that I think we should definitely be considering and making sure that we're protecting renters from those types of, you know, sort of extreme rent problems. We don't want to end up, I don't think, in a place where we, where New York ended up. I think rent control or rent stabilization, whatever word we want to use for it, we need to make sure we're getting the best of both things. We want to empower especially smaller landlords. We want to make sure that they are not with, you know, pulling their supply from the market, so we want to make sure that they're encouraged and that we're supporting them, and we want to make sure we're supporting renters, because we, the best way to prevent homelessness is to prevent somebody from dropping into homelessness in the first place. Number-one reason why people end up homeless is their one paycheck short of making rent.
Rob Saka, same question to you. Yes or no on rent control if Seattle could enact it, and why?
No, but the way the question was framed lets some folks off the hook. Let's clarify that I don't support rent controls, like, principally because, as you alluded to, under existing state law, localities, municipalities, including Seattle, are explicitly prohibited, preempted from enacting any rent control whatsoever. There's not even a triggering provision that says if 10 cities do it, then, then, well, no. So what does that mean? So any discussion of rent control at the Seattle City Council level, including some of the, you know, staged events the past few months, it's less time that we could be focusing on public safety, housing affordability, and homelessness. So, look, first and foremost, the state must act, and then, let's consider it. But by the way, based off the initial research and evidence that I've seen so far, I haven't seen anything that it's like, it's actually productive or, you know, like, it works. Even from Cal Berkeley released a report recently, and there are no, anyway, so we need a, we need a more thoughtful approach to all these issues.
Thank you. And so just to be clear, this was a, maybe you would consider it, but you're skeptical, and this was a yes on stabilization, but watching out for the ways that it could impact the housing market?
Yep.
Is that accurate, Rob?
It doesn't, it's not allowable right now. So if and when it becomes allowable, let's explore that. But, end of the analysis, it's the right discussion, wrong forum.
All right.
All right, the fun part, the lightning round. No seagulls here, but don't take too long thinking about these, if that's okay. We don't have the placards to hold up or whatever, because it's a verbal thing. So we're gonna start with a real West Seattle question. West Seattle Bowl or Easy Street Records? Marin Costa.
Easy Street Records.
Easy Street, but my kids do love bowls, so we're split.
All right. Let's go for, who did you vote for in the 2021 mayor's race? Rob, let's stick with you.
Mayor Bruce Harrell.
Lorraine Gonzalez.
What about the 2021 city attorney's race? Marin?
Nicole Thomas Kennedy.
Current city attorney Ann Davidson.
And, Rob, what about the 2019 race for District One, West Seattle?
Councilmember Herbold.
Herbold.
Two for Herbold, okay. Marin, would you vote to ban encampment sweeps during extremely hot or cold weather?
Yes.
Rob?
Maybe, yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay. All right, I want to ask about budgeting. Seattle's forecasting some huge budget deficits, like 200 million plus, starting in 2025. A work group recently suggested, I think the language was, a number of possibilities to fill that gap, and I wanted to ask about all of those. So let's just go down the list, and you can give me your answers that way. Rob, high-pay CEO ratio tax?
Let's explore that, but let's also be disciplined with our existing budget. Both those things can coexist.
Okay. One for discipline with our existing budget and a maybe on the high, maybe? Marin?
Yes.
Yes. Rob, a 1% to 2% capital gains tax modeled after the state capital gains tax?
Maybe.
Yes.
Tax on vacant property?
Yes.
Yes.
Traffic congestion tax?
We need to understand impacts of that. Where's that gonna go? But maybe.
I would be concerned about being, being regressive.